Well, that does not sound the same as it does in the city council chambers. I just want to put that out there for the record. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Tempe City Council and Tempe Development Review Commission Joint Meeting Agenda. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Item number two here we're going to go to is the Development Bonus Program Options for Affordable Housing in Tempe, and I'm going to call upon our Community Development Director Jeff Tamilevich. Good afternoon.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor and council members, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. My name is Jeff Tamilevich. I'm the Community Development Director, and I want to thank you for being here today. We've got a couple of good items on the agenda. Before we get started, though, I want to introduce the team who's going to be presenting and answering questions. That team is Ryan Leveque behind me, Michelle Dalkey, Ambika Adikari, Jacob Payne, Lucas Jensen, Chase Wallman, and Anthony Straight from the Downtown Tempe Authority. So, like I said, there are two items on the agenda today. It's the Development Bonus Program and Parking. Both topics, I think, are going to be of great interest to all of you. There's a lot of information that's going to be presented today, so please ask questions if you have them. I'm going to start off talking about the first item. The first item we'll be presenting is the Development Bonus Program. And Ambika, if you want to come up here. You all probably recall that the Development Bonus Program was proposed in 2019. It was a part of a voluntary -- it was proposed in 2019 as a voluntary option for developers, and it was part of the Urban Core Master Plan, which, as you know, got scrapped in 2021. Things got contentious, and I believe one of the reasons that it wasn't moved forward was it was just too complicated and there was too much going on. So, there's a number of components -- there was a number of components connected to that bonus program at that time, and the truth is, if we really want to make progress and we have a specific goal that we're trying to achieve with this program, then I think we need to isolate and focus on that goal. So, we want to focus on one element of the bonus program rather than focusing several options like we did back in 2019. That one element today is affordable housing. We believe that simplifying the program and providing an emphasis strictly on affordable housing will make the program understandable, not only to our developers but our community, and it will also provide a focus on the underlying goal or one of the major underlying goals of the city of Tempe, which is affordable housing. So, at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Ambika, and he's going to tell you a little bit more about the program.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, DRC Chair and DRC Commission members. So, we'll talk about the Development Bonus Program Options for Affordable Housing in Tempe. The presentation is about between 25 to 30 minutes, like Jeff says. Feel free to ask any questions in between, or you can wait until the end. It's your preference. The presentation today will talk about what is the -- what is a Development Bonus Program? We'll do a quick review of what kind of affordable housing incentives we have in the city of Tempe right now, and then we'll also do a quick review of the bonus and incentive programs in Flagstaff, Phoenix, Scottsdale, and also an example of Seattle very briefly. And we'll explore bonus program framework for Tempe, and then, most importantly, we'll seek your input and concurrence on the next steps. So, the first slide -- we'll come back to this slide later on also towards the end. We'll be seeking your council and DRC input and concurrence on two questions here. Does the city want to create a Development Bonus Program to incentivize affordable housing? That's one question. The other one is, if so, what would be the framework for such a bonus program? How it would look like? Now, just as a background, you already know it, but I just wanted to put it here and reiterate it that in Arizona, we cannot do inclusionary zoning. It's prohibited. What that means is we cannot have any conditions of approval of any zoning or any other development applications that we require affordable housing or low-income housing as a part of that. We can't do that here. But what we can do is the law does allow Arizona jurisdictions to create incentives and bonus programs to increase the supply of affordable housing. So, that's the last point that we're trying to explore right now. What is a bonus program? A bonus program is a voluntary process for developers to provide public benefits to receive additional residential density, floor space, and building height beyond what the existing zoning allows on a property. So, any particular site has entitlement that is given to them. They can build to certain heights, certain density, and certain density, floor area. But if they want to go beyond that as a voluntary option, they can opt this bonus program. They can choose this bonus program. And let's see. Okay, here is a quick diagram. You see on the right side, the project has to create additional project value for the applicant. So, the top height is the one, if you want to provide it to them as an additional project value for the project, as a bonus density or bonus floor area. They can provide you something in terms of the public benefit. For example, the dark projects could be the affordable unit. So, basically, they're getting something and they're giving something back. So, the additional project value is what makes a bonus program possible to get a public benefit. Now, I have a couple of slides on how a Development Bonus Program will work in Tempe, and today the presentation is really on the high level. The hometown for all program will remain as it is. It's very important, so we wanted to put that right as bullet point number one. The bonus program can be applicable in the Urban Core area like we tried in 2018 to 2020, or it could be citywide, and this is something we can discuss further. It will be a voluntary program. I'm emphasizing it for developers to choose. It's not mandatory. Any approved program will be incorporated as a part of the Tempe's Zoning and Development Code. What that means is it is administratively implementable because it's part of the code. The staff can actually look at it and say, okay, this is how much a bonus you get for this -- giving this much benefit to the public, and that can really help the developers save time, cost, and avoid uncertainties of any rezoning proposals. But because we have the planned area development option on the books, they can still utilize that to get additional height and density. Continuing on, the slide number two on this particular topic is we will, if we go forward, we'll create a simplified formula to be crafted for developers, and based on that, they will provide affordable housing in two possible ways. One is onsite, on the building itself, or they pay in lieu fee. This is something in our internal discussion among the staff. Probably, we want to discourage it, but many of the bonus programs do have these two options, and obviously, your guidance will be appreciated on those two items. The bonus program formula that we craft will depend on the affordability of the homes for different income categories. If you are making affordable housing for 80% of the area median income, obviously, the cost to the developer is less compared to if they are making housing available to the families who only earn up to 30% of the area median income. In other words, people who are really, you know, extreme poverty because they can only charge so much. Those amounts are fixed, and I'll go to some of those slides. Those costs are different, so the formula will kind of take this into account. The area median income right now for a family of four in the valley is approximately $94,000. It kind of changes every year, the housing in urban development, the state, and the cities kind of fix it. Okay, so the -- how will -- continuing on on how the program will work in Tempe, the developer will have to sign a covenant or an agreement with the city that they will guarantee the affordability of that housing for 30 years, and it is renewable. The affordability could also be assured through doing a development agreement between the city and the developer, and the Tempe housing staff are a third party. We'll have to verify the eligibility and the income criteria for people to get into those affordable units, and I'll come into a little more detail into this one because this means additional person power. Now, the council had approved in 2022 a policy to measure the public benefit of affordable housing units, and there are three slides out here. On slide number one, and two, and three, all of them have one particular type of example of development. 20 units of affordable housing units, 14-studio, one, four-one bedrooms, and two-two-bedroom units, just as an example. If the developer provides it for the people who earn up to 80% of the area median income, total cost to them in the lifetime of the project is about $1.3 million. Economic Development Department prepared it through a consultants, and council approved it in 2022. That's because they can only charge what is allowed for the 80% median income, which is $1,110 per studio per month, whereas the market rate is more like $1,331. So, that's the difference. The income foregone is more. And next example, if it is up to the 60% AMI that they're doing catering, then they forego $2.267 million. That is the public benefit to the city and the community of them providing affordable housing. The last slide on this one is if they provide it to the families who make only up to 30% of the area median income, which is kind of, you know, really extreme poverty, they cannot charge, for example, more than $420 for a studio apartment. The income foregone by the developer is more than $4 million. That's the public benefit that the city or the community gets. So, just three quick examples on how these things are kind of calculated. Now, some of these should be considered on a new Development Bonus Program.
Quick question, Ambika. If we could go back to the last slide, Vice Mayor Adams had a question about some of the monthly rent income numbers?
Yes.
Yes, there you go. For the studio, it's $5,880, and then for the one-bedroom, it's only $1,800, and two-bedroom, $1,100. Can you explain why it's going down as opposed to going up for those three categories?
It's actually the -- so, the rent is going up. Rent is $420 for a studio. For a one-bedroom, it's $450. For a two-bedroom, it's $550. It's going up. So, rental income that the -- the difference in the rental income for the developer are those two other amounts. So, those are two different things. So, the rent is going up.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Sure. And so, some of the issues that need to be considered if we do a Development Bonus Program, I'm listing a couple here. One is, again, the Affordable Housing Bonus Program in Tempe should not negatively or adversely impact the hometown for all program, and there's also some experience that we had in 2018, 2020. There might be some resistance from developers for a new bonus program because right now, the planned area development program is available, which is, you know, essentially free of cost. And we'll spend a few minutes talking about what we have existing and previously proposed affordable housing-related incentive programs in Tempe. Number one is we do have a Tempe Hometown for All Program. I'm going to spend very little time on this one because you crafted it, the mayor initiated it, and it's in the books right now. For those people who are not totally up to date, an amount equivalent to 50% of the building permitting fees are set aside by the city for Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing, also known as an affiliate, which actually does the affordable housing, building, renting, buying, and so forth. And there's also suggested voluntary contribution to the developers, which is equivalent to 20% of the permitting fees that they pay for residential projects or 10% of the total permitting fees that they pay for the commercial projects.
Quick, one more question, actually. Vice Mayor?
Yes. How are we doing on voluntary contributions?
Okay, I'll have to come back to it, or I'll have to ask somebody who knows that exact question. I think we have some money in the funds, but I don't know that amount.
We don't know those numbers at this time.
Jeff was saying that we don't know the numbers at this time, but they can definitely get the numbers and bring them to you and the entire council, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're doing well, though. That's what I have in some place.
I would like to say that, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And then, so, those funds are definitely being used to rent by affordable dwelling units, and -- sorry about that. Okay, let me go back slowly, one at a time. You get a preview of everything. You'll see. Okay, we're on this slide. Sorry about that, but you know, you've got to see what we are.
I was going to say, that was quite the spoiler. You know, I was like, oh, I read all the slides now already, so.
You memorized it all, right?
Quick, I committed all of it to memory.
Mr. Ma. Okay, so, that was the slide we talked about. Now, let's try the next one. And the next program that we have right now is kind of small, but we have a reduction in permitting fees in the Apache Boulevard Redevelopment Area, which is the diagram that you see on the right, which is along Apache between rural and to the eastern boundary of the city, south of University and north of rail tracks. If people -- if a developer wants to provide 15% of the housing units on a residential development for income groups that earn between 100% to 120% of the area median income, which is kind of workforce housing, they get their fees, permitting fees reduced by 50%. Or if they provide 10% of the affordable units for the medium people making income between 80% to 100% of the area median income, those families, they also get that 50% reduction in the permitting fees. This is one thing that we have in the book. It's already in the appendix of the zoning ordinance. We administratively do it if somebody comes forward and does that. The next one is we have an affordable -- Tempe's Affordable Housing Strategy that the council adopted in 2019, one of the first cities in the valley to have an affordable housing strategy. It does promote fee waivers, reimbursement, abetments, and so on to promote affordable housing, number one. And it also suggests a lot of strategies. One of them is to expand what I just showed you on the Apache Redevelopment Area corridor, that program citywide. So, if people want to provide affordable housing in their development in other locations also, they should also get the fee reduction. That was a proposal that was suggested in this particular strategy document. And then, they also said that the document, the affordability of any unit that they provide should be documented as a covenant with the city for 30 years. The staff has just a small note down below that if it's only permitting fees, it's not a lot of amount. That particular covenant should be a very short period of time, probably six to eight years and not 30 years. I'm being careful, but, okay. Now, the other program that we had is we had this bonus program in 2020 that some of you very well remember, between 2018 and 2020. We did the Urban Core Master Plan that Jeff talked about. Part of that was an update of the Transportation Overlay District. We call that Urban Code District UCD. Now, UCD had seven different subzones, and like Jeff mentioned, we actually, in the bonus program, we had four different elements. One was affordable housing. Other one was sustainability elements, historic preservation on any site that qualified for it, and open space. If the developer provide a combination of any one of these or any one of those, they will gain some points, and we actually had a consultants, and if they gained 100 points, they will get bonus more or less administratively. And this was all voluntary. First of all, they will opt into the new Urban Code District, the updated TOD. It was voluntary opt-in. We looked at Phoenix. Phoenix Urban, Wackable Urban Code is opt-in. So is Deformed Base Code in Mesa is opt-in. So, you just opt in, and then if you -- that does away with the Prop 2 or 7 problems and so on. If you opt in, then you automatically get some height. The basic standards, you get like 90 to 200 feet, 25 feet height on Urban Code District 1. But if you wanted to go for bonus, which is another voluntary choose, you'll automatically get 160 feet in height and additional density if you achieve 100 points. How do you achieve those 100 points? There were tables that we had prepared. If developers provided 3% of the units as affordable units for the people making up to 50% of the AMI, they get full 100 points. Similarly, if they provided 5% of the affordable units as affordable to those people making between 51% to 80% of AMI, they also get 100 points. So, there are many ways to get 100 points. If you got the 100 points, you get automatically those bonus heights and density that I showed in the previous diagram. They could also do a housing in lieu fee, but to discourage the in lieu fee and encourage the actually project, the affordable units in the project, they could only get 70 points if they paid the whole money as an in lieu fee, and they had to gain other points through other sustainability elements. So, that's how it was crafted then. Now, we'll quickly talk about some of the other programs that we have in the peer cities and also as an example. So, we'll talk about Flagstaff, Phoenix, and Scottsdale very briefly. Flagstaff does have a housing incentive program for quite some time. It's quoted into its zoning ordinance. There are two types of program to get the housing incentive. One is a fee reduction fee waiver, the kind that we have on the Apache Boulevard Redevelopment Area, or even expedited review. The other one is actually you get additional height and densities as a part of the zoning code and ordinance. So, how does that work? Let's look at this table. We don't have to read the whole table, but if we look at just one example, if a developer in their particular development provides 10% of the total number of residential unit as affordable to Category 1, which is people making up to 80% of the area median income, they get 20% density bonus, okay? And similarly, there are many. If they provide 20% of those units as affordable for that Category 1 income, they get 45% additional bonus. But each one of them, they have to give a covenant for 99 years for anything ownership if they are selling the property to those area median income people, or if they are renting it, they have to sign a covenant for 30 years, and each one of them, they definitely have to go to the city council in order to do that. So, that's one example in Flagstaff, and we talked to some of the planners out there on that. Okay. In Phoenix, they -- the affordable housing incentive is a part of the package of a large number of menu items that you will see. They've got like, you know, dozens of menu items that they can provide as a public benefit to the city, and for each thing that they provide, they gain some credits and some points, and based on how many credits and points that they make, they get some benefit in terms of the heights and density and floor area. So, the -- these things are available only on one or two of the character areas near downtown, and if they gain more than 70 points, for example, they can get 50% more building height and 100% more residential density on that location, and I'll provide some examples. So, if they provide between 10% to 24% of the total number of units as affordable, they get eight points, and if they provide more than 50% of affordable units in their development, they get 18 points, and you stack the points like on the left, and then commensurate with that, you get additional bonus in density or in height, as you see on those two tables. Now, the third slide is not meant to be read. This shows the total gamut of the menu of options that you can have in city of Phoenix, what they call a sustainability bonus program. As you can see, the affordable housing is the last but one, but there are many other things. You can plant more trees. You can provide more bike racks. You can provide solar shade. You can do a few other things and then gain a lot of point. So, we spoke with the planners in city of Phoenix on how many people have used the affordable housing, the bonus. Most of the people took the low-hanging fruits of doing something else, which is kind of easy that they will do anyway, and when we talked to them like a year or two ago, nobody had taken the affordable housing program. Okay, in Scottsdale, the rubricage is somewhat different. Scottsdale, basically, some people call it pay-for-play. You actually have to pay to get additional bonus in terms of the floor area and also height, but you can also provide it onsite, the equivalent amount of money and benefit to the public. In Scottsdale, the bonus is available, again, bonus is voluntary. Bonus is available only in two area. One is the overlay in downtown. The other one is the overlay at the airport. And if you provide any of the public benefits, there's a whole long list of it in the zoning ordinance, like water supplies, sidewalks, more trees, more parking spaces, public parking spaces, shaded areas, a number of things that if you provide either money or provide it on the site, you get those bonus, and we'll see the examples on how those bonuses are calculated. They have a formula, so people know in advance how much it is going to cost to them to provide it in terms of money or to provide it onsite, and they get the bonus. Okay, so, they created this in 2013, and that's the formula. If you want additional floor area for every square feet that you want as a bonus, you multiply that by $10, and every time you want additional height, every feet, you multiply that by $10,000, and same thing for every additional unit of density, you multiply it by $10,000. You don't always add them. Some of them are kind of, you know, you can do one or the other, but sometimes if there's an overflow that you want that bonus floor area, but if the height on that particular area is not available and you want additional height, you also pay for the height. And those formulas were done in 2013, and every year, there's a 3.5% price escalator that goes up, and so, it's part of the bonus program in the zoning ordinance, and every case, there is a development agreement with the city. And we spoke with one of the planners out there on how it is done, and he gave us one example. If someone is looking for 20,000 square feet additional bonus in a particular development or 25 feet extra feet if they needed it, then the square foot is -- cost would be $263,000, and the height will be $329,000. It may not be necessarily added if the height is available, but if it could be, in the worst case, it could also be added, and they will end up paying like half a million dollars to get that kind of benefit. This is an example that one of the planners gave it to us. This was for 2021 because every year, it kind of goes up a little bit. Yes?
Yes, please. Special word?
In that instance, what is the city of Scottsdale doing with those fees as it relates to affordable housing?
Actually, I was coming to that on the next slide, but good question. They either collect the money, they have a fund, or equivalent to that kind of money, you provide amenities on the site. So, either of those two. So, I think I have one more slide here. Okay, no. So, either way, that's the formula that you use. That is the total cost for you, and if you are providing like the sidewalk, the construction cost of that sidewalk has to be equivalent to this bonus formula that is being cost, and they have to show you the bill. That is the kind of development agreement that they get. Or they could provide affordable housing, I think, up to 40% of the workforce housing onsite and get all that benefit either way. So, it gives you an idea, just the way that I showed you for city of Tempe, what is the public value of the affordable housing provision? There's a value, there's a cost to the developer, there's a value to the city and the community, right? So, here, there is a formula, and how much is the value? You can either pay it in terms of money or equivalent of that, you actually provide the in-kind service on the site. Okay, so, here's a quick example that I will run. We cannot do this, but one of the former DRC members asked us, hey, can you take Seattle? They have a very simple formula. You want additional floor area, you multiply it by some amount, and you pay that money, and you get that approval, even for rezoning. This is how it is. Okay, so, I have just a couple of slides. It is called mandatory housing affordability, unlike a voluntary program, and they can do it, because they can do inclusionary zoning in Washington State. So, these are -- they have a table. They use a consultants. They create a table, and every year, they update it, and based on that table, whatever you're looking for, even if you're applying for rezoning for additional height, you pay to the affordable housing fund or you provide affordable housing. And certain percentage, all depends on different locations. There are like, I think, 10 pages of the table. I will give you one example. I will give you one example. So if there is a rezoning approval, you pay that. And depending on where you are looking for that additional area or additional density, you pay anywhere between $6 to $43 per square foot of the additional square footage that you're looking at, that you want as a bonus. This was 2024, 2025, it might change. And those total amount of contribution are based on the zoning district, mixed up residential, commercial. There's a whole, like I said, about seven pages of the table on the zoning ordinance. But the DRC member who asked us found it very simple because you basically, you know, there's no voluntary contribution. There's a mandatory contribution based on how many square foot is more you're looking, and you pay that money or provide equivalent of that into affordable housing. Okay. So let's see. Do I point it this way? Where do I point it? There? It's frozen. I don't want to make it up last time, like last time. Sorry.
I wouldn't worry, Ambika, we've already seen all the slides, so you know. Not spoiling, I mean, we've already seen them, I'm just saying, you know.
Technology always gives us a little bit of a break.
Yeah, it's like while we're having a break, is there anyone else who has any questions? City commissioners or council members? Also, I should note that Councilmember Navarro is actually online as well. Commissioner Lloyd, and then I'll go to Councilmember Garlet.
Thank you, Mayor. In one of the earlier slides, you had a comment, I think, about having the bonus program in the urban core and potentially other areas. Can you talk about what you meant by other areas or what kind of conversation you wanted to have around that?
Exactly. So you saw that the Seattle area is the bonus that people want is citywide. And the bonus program in City of Flagstaff is also citywide. In Scottsdale, it's available only in downtown and airport. So is in Phoenix, it's only available in downtown two character area. Now, the proposal that we had between 2018 and 2020 here is a part of Urban Core Master Plan was it was available only on the Urban Core District, which was a TOD. Now, this is something that the city can, the mayor, you know, the council and DRC can give us some directions. You can also make it citywide because other cities have made it citywide and put it in the book. Or you can put it on, only on the downtown or the Apache corridor right now. Those are the kind of two options that we're thinking about. Sometimes, it's much easier to do TOD. We did the TOD that time because we had the Federal Transit Administration money. That actually required that you also do affordable housing study as a part of the TOD grant, and Eric knows a lot more about that. Okay. So you can actually move it for me. Is this the next one? Yeah, there's a lot of information, and we are going a little fast, so please feel free to ask us anything. Okay. Okay. So now we'll talk about, you might have to move it for me. Okay, I got it. So we'll talk about a very high-level overview of what kind of framework for a development bonus program in Tempe could be crafted, what would be the elements. And again, to reiterate, the bonus height and square footage will be commensurate with the onsite provision of affordable housing. Of course, the formula will say how much you provide, how much you pay, how much you gain, right? And the in lieu payment option will also equal to the financial cost of providing the onsite affordable housing. But as you saw in the previous example, the 2018-2020 program, we discourage the in lieu payment and ask them to pay a little more, like 5% or 10% more than it will cost them in providing onsite so that, you know, if they provide it onsite, it's there. People can just move in and there's a housing. This is something that we need to kind of think about. But, you know, they have to be kind of approximately equal value. We can make a little bit of a marginal difference. The financial cost of providing affordable housing is always equal to forgone income by the developer. That's how the bonus programs are crafted. Okay. So if we do craft a formula like Scottsdale had, then what will happen is we'll have to, one of the components is going to be one, what kind of income groups that particular housing units is catering to? Is it below 30%? Of course, the cost is going to be way more. They get more bonus by providing less amount, less percentage of those housing. If it is between 30% to 80% of the area median income, it's moderate. And if you're providing housing to people who make between 80% to 100% of the median income, then obviously, you have to provide a lot more housing because the cost is going to be lower for them. And then accordingly, there's going to be a percentage of affordable housing that they have to provide that we saw in the 2018-2020 proposal. And then the equivalent in lieu that we can calculate in terms of thousands of dollars. Then we can tweak that whether it is equal or slightly more than the actual provision of the onsite. And then the additional building height bonus in feet or square foot could be something like what Seattle or the Scottsdale had, and we can craft a formula. We can do that right now, but I'm just saying, what are some of the parts of the equation if we want to craft a formula and simplify? Like Jeb mentioned right in the beginning, the 2018-2020 was a little more complex, complicated. And, you know, people want something simpler. Scottsdale is just one formula and so forth. Okay. So now, towards the end of the presentation, there are a couple of potential issues and challenges we wanted to flag. One is, of course, we have talked with our internal legal team, but right now, it's on the high level. But if we go into a little more detail, we'll need to go a little more detail with the legal team. And then, of course, there's also a possibility that there could be some potential resistance from developers for the new development bonus program and the market conditions. Anytime you do a bonus program, it depends on the market. That may shift if the real estate goes down and people, the value of the bonus is not that high. People may not be, they may be no-takers, right? And whether we want to do it citywide or specific, like there was a question. And obviously, if we do it, there's going to be additional administrative capacity to do it administratively and also to eligibility.
Quick question, Ambika and Jeff. So one of the things I know that folks might ask is, so since this is only planned for more or less sort of the urban core downtown space and along Apache Boulevard, along light rail, there could be some concern, and we've heard some of this from people, that is this only going to be sort of an affordable housing program for ASU students? Or are we really expecting if we implement something like a development bonus program, we're going to be creating housing for other people? Perhaps workers in the service industry and teachers and nurses and people of that nature. But do we feel that we're going to get that broad diversity of person living in this affordable or attainable housing if we create this program? Or is there a concern that it might just simply be students, folks at MCC or at ASU?
Okay. For me, it's a difficult question to answer, but housing people might do it because right now, all we are doing is limiting the area median income. As long as they're eligible, they probably qualify. But I think the housing might have a way of administering it because we do administer the vouchers on income eligibility and so forth. But at this stage, we are only talking about the high level, but that's a great question. Maybe later on, someone from housing can go into a little more detail. Hopefully, that will help you, Mayor.
That's it? No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. And then, obviously, we'll need additional administrative capacity, partly to do that eligibility and also partly to administer the program. Then almost the last slide, slight variation from the first question that I asked. Again, does the city council want to create a development bonus program for projects providing affordable housing to receive additional density or height? Question number one. Slightly revised question number two is, do we want to consider discouraging the in lieu option? So that's where we are. And with that, there is a list of the staff. And any questions, whether you want to do it now or later on?
Wonderful. All right. No, thank you so much for the presentation, Ambika and Jeff, really appreciate it. My general thought, and I mean, definitely I want to go around and see what commissioners and council members think. And I know Councilmember Garlet had a question as well. I'm very supportive of this. I really like the simplified version. The previous Urban Core Master Plan and Density Bonus Program came around right before I know myself and Councilmember Garlet joined the council. But I remember at that time, hearing from many, from residents and from folks in all different areas that they were just concerned that the plan was a little bit too complicated. When things become tough for people to understand, it becomes tougher to get community buy-in. And so I like the fact that this is a more simplified version. This was something I know that the council has talked about and the DRC has talked about as well of, even if we didn't go forward with a full Urban Core Master Plan, we should try to pull the pieces out of it that we thought could get a lot more broad consensus and discuss those items. So I'm glad we're talking about this. But no, I think that any tool that we have to increase the supply of affordable and attainable housing, and I think a development bonus program has absolutely been something that's worked around the country in various types of places that work. We're clearly building out an urban downtown with lots of height and density. We have one of the most walkable downtowns, frankly, in the entire valley, which I think is what attracts a lot of people to Tempe in the first place to either move their company or expand existing operations. And so from my perspective, you know, there's not one thing that becomes the catch-all that solves your affordable housing problem. It's doing a number of different things and taking a number of different measures to get to that point where you can actually really thoughtfully and proactively address the affordable housing crisis that we have, not just in Tempe, but frankly, across the country. So my perspective is, I mean, I'm very comfortable with the approach that you're talking about, and I think this is absolutely something that the city should pursue. So I'm very, very supportive. But anyone, Councilmember Garlet?
I agree. I think it's, I think we do need to have more tools that we could use to get the affordable housing that we need. And I have to be perfectly honest. I looked through these slides like twice, and they still seemed like flyspecks on a piece of paper because there's just so many numbers and things that are on there. But I trust that you guys will be still coming up with something that will be really great for us to be able to use. But I do think we need to be able to do something else. And I appreciate what you've got here. My first question, I think you've already answered, was going to be, did it require additional staff members? And you had already said that that is what you would have to do. My other question was, it's on here, it said that we would be doing it like 30 years and then offer renewable because that's what some other cities have done. Is there any data on the history of that? Has it been around long enough that any developer had said, oh, I love it, 30 years, we're going to do another 30? Does it actually happen?
This is something we can definitely check with Flagstaff because they've been doing this for a while. And probably our housing people probably also might have some response to that. We can check on it.
Yeah, I would like to know that because maybe it's not 30 years, maybe it's 40. And I guess because in my head, now that I've got grandchildren coming up, I'm thinking, you know, 30 years really isn't that far away. And so what are they going to be looking at? Or what are their younger siblings going to be looking at when they start to look for housing in the City of Tempe? So 30 years, to me, just does not seem that so far away anymore.
We saw that in Flagstaff for ownership, they actually need 99 years.
Yeah, I saw 99 years for ownership. Right, 99 years for ownership, right. Okay. And then the other question is, oh, I guess this is a really big one we just talked about. Does it work? Does it, do the development bonus plans in cities really work? Because I would hate for you guys to spend all the time that you need to do to pull all this plan together. I mean, I wouldn't hate it. I wouldn't be happy about it. But you pulled all this thing together, and then nobody takes advantage of it. Does it work in other communities? That's my last question.
I could fire in maybe Jeff and other people can check in. We have in the books a planned area development option right now. We have the planned area development option right now that people can take it. That doesn't really cost a real, you know, money unless they want to provide some voluntary contribution to the hometown for all program or there's a cost of rezoning and there's some uncertainties and so on. That option is still available because it's in the book. So that's why we had these two places, there might be some resistance. And when we did the 2018 to 2020, some of the inputs that we got from some of the developers and zoning attorneys is, hey, if you simplify it and make it like Scottsdale, we'll know exactly how much it is going to cost. It might be easier. Right now, you're giving a lot of options, so it might be a little more complicated. That was one of the responses we got at that time. But we have talked to some of the people like in the Rosemont Takers and City of Flagstaff. In Scottsdale, affordable housing is only one of the elements. Scottsdale is not really known for affordable housing. They are using that money for something else, right? In Phoenix, they have now a new housing strategy that they're trying to do other incentives. But this particular program is kind of lukewarm for affordable housing because you saw the whole page, how many elements that they have. There are some low-hanging fruits that people just take it. If you do require that you have to provide affordable housing, this is something that we encourage to get your rezoning height and all that stuff. Obviously, people want to build.
Okay. I think, and one other thing that just made me think of. So your other question was, do we support or would we consider the in lieu of cost? I personally would rather see affordable housing than money in the bank. So I would say I would not support that. I'd rather have them putting in affordable housing.
I have a quick comment on that, Councilwoman, that this is from the experience from last time. We also think the same way. But what we gathered last time is there are some developers who may not like even a bonus if they have to provide affordable housing in the same development. In such case, they can probably have an option for the providing the money because at the end, that money can be used for affordable housing. But, you know, we are with you on this.
Yeah. I'm not going to feel too bad about that. So, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Raj.
I know that there are many options that look great on this plan, and, but it does look still a little complicated. But, I mean, it makes a lot more sense to me today, so good job on that. I'm just wondering if we could have like a one-stop shop for people, developers or anybody interested in coming into the community. They would have number, one number that they could call, and somebody can work, walk them through this that really understands it, a subject matter expertise, or expert, I should say. So I'm just thinking about along those lines, just trying to make it easy and kind of so they have a mentor or someone to walk them through the process and look at all the different options and what works best for them.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Adams and Mayor, we can definitely do that. It's going to be something like, we have a project assistant team right now. We also have like a green building consultant, a person who will come as a staff, who will be the one-stop shop. This one, of course, today was very high level. If we do go forward, first of all, to really craft a good formula, we probably need an outside consultant, at least for a short time, because we are kind of planners and, you know, we do certain things. And you can simplify it only so much because there's going to be a mix of different income eligibility that you need to cater. But still, you can do like, you know, Scottsdale, there's a formula that people know how much it is going to cost them. Once that is kind of done, anyone who, any of the planner, any person that we hire as a new, like a housing planner or something, I think they have it in some of the cities, that could easily be that one-stop person, easily. Right now, even we can respond if people have some questions.
Like we have one call to City Hall, you know, the 311. So I just, something like that is kind of what I'm thinking about. This is a great presentation, and thank you for all your hard work because this was an extensive presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Raj?
I think, yes. Thank you for the presentation. I agree with the mayor. I think that we need as much in our toolbox as possible. I also agree with Councilmember Garlet that I don't like the in lieu part of it. I do, would rather do it completely with the affordable housing. My question is, we have educated people in our community, but even I had a hard time following that. Is there something that if we're going to put it out there, make sure when we do it online or in our website, that is something a little less complex for people to understand? Like break it down for our constituents so they can understand exactly what we're doing when we go out to our city?
Councilmember Harland, Mayor, I take some of the blames because, you know, I mean, it, right now, we wanted to give you a kind of, an overview of what other cities are doing. And even Scottsdale formula is very complicated. We had to talk to a few people to actually tell us how exactly they implemented. And so there was a lot of information on a few slides, including our own studies. But if we do go forward and create it, we'll simplify it as much as we can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Commissioner Miller?
Okay. First of all, thank you very much. It's a very good presentation, and it's very timely and necessary. I do have a question because you're talking about two areas of incentivization. One, increasing height. Secondly, increasing density. At what point do you run up against existing limits At what point do you run up against existing limits in areas where you're talking about developing? And if so, are we looking at a situation where, well, I can buy additional building height, or I can buy additional density by putting in affordable housing, even though it's not necessarily allowed in the particular area? And so then I'm going to have to have a PAD or a general plan amendment? And, and I realize these are just examples, but I'm just thinking down the road.
Yeah, Commissioner Miller, Chair, and the Mayor, so we actually did have some internal conversation on that one. Right now, the limit is the general plan density. And if, if, if we want to go beyond the general plan density, could it be done administratively or something? That, we didn't want to kind of complicate too many things today, but that's something that we have begun to think about. We can talk to other cities. But right now, the bonus program is, the initial bonus program will be structured in such a way that your particular zoning on a site will give you so much height and so much density, right? And if you want to go beyond that, here are some of the formulas that give you the expense and the cost and what you need to provide. This is where we are right now, but that limit is a very good question. We need to discuss that a little further.
Yes, Commissioner Lloyd?
Thank you, Mayor. I know when this was proposed back in 2019, even more complex layer, there was bonus height swapping, I believe. And I liked that because it would allow for a little bit more character and not so much, you know, monolithic development. Is that something we might still consider as part of this?
The height swapping was the transfer of development right, called TDR, in technical jargon of zoning. And that was only for the historic preservation because if somebody wanted to kind of demolish the historic property because they could build more, we wanted to give them an option that, hey, keep it as it is, but here's a bonus that you can get for preserving it. That bonus, you can sell or you can transfer. And then we actually looked at several cities in Arizona legally, and it was a surprise. Tucson, couple other places did have the transfer of development right is allowed by our law. And so it was in relation to the historic preservation, Commissioner Lloyd and Mayor.
So I think if we consider doing this, I don't know, I would, I would like to see maybe that added. I know it's already complicated as it is, but then the ability to kind of protect some of those character areas through that.
So this particular time, we're trying not to talk about historic preservation. That time, we had like four different elements to get a bonus, to get 100 points, to historic preservation, open space, affordable housing, and sustainability elements. And in the historic preservation, the TDR was there. So I think it's a topic that we can discuss a little further, but we're trying to simplify just for affordable housing on a particular site, if they build how much bonus height and density that they can get, if that helps you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilman Brach?
I know we're talking mostly about the car, you know, the area of Apache and downtown area, but it's, I also know that we have some property on Guadalupe, like Kyrene and, it's Kyrene and Guadalupe area that they were talking about too. Is that something possible that we can add in there? Because I know they were trying to add that in and think about maybe teacher housing, so I was wondering, is that something that we can look at in the future in that area over there too, on that Guadalupe Kyrene area too, also? Could that be something that be included?
Councilmember Holland and Mayor, actually, we did have a couple of slides. We wanted your input to make it citywide, it's very easy. Flagstaff is citywide. Scottsdale is not citywide. Seattle is citywide. So this is something that we can definitely discuss further. We just only gave you an example that during the urban code master planning process, because of the money that we had gotten for the TOD update, we had limited it within the urban code district only. But this is something definitely can be citywide. Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, any further comments or questions for noon? All right, sounds good. Thank you, and we appreciate it. Jeff, thank you so much. Jeff, are you staying for the next one? I had a feeling you weren't going too far. All right, so that brings us to item number three, comparative analysis of parking requirements in Tempe and Phoenix.
Yeah. All right, so the second item being presented today is parking. And staff will discuss parking throughout the city, but our presentation focus is going to be on the downtown airport, since this is the area that has sort of monopolized a lot of the discussions we've had in, in recent, you know, downtown projects. So city staff and the downtown Tempe authority, we will be providing some data and information. Again, if you have questions when we're relaying this information, please ask. Staff is going to then provide you with some recommendations on parking and traffic and congestion, and, and we'll go from there. But I'm going to pass it along to Michelle Delkey at this time, and she's going to tell the details, and, but we'll be here for questions, which I anticipate.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, council members, and commissioners. We appreciate the, the time to speak with you today. So as Jeff pointed out, we're going to be discussing our comparative analysis that we've conducted of the parking requirements, both in the city of Tempe and the city of Phoenix. Thank you very much. All right, so the first thing I'd like to do is just give you a brief overview of the outline of the presentation. So we'll be providing a review of the parking situation in the city of Tempe, the downtown area in particular, to assess adequacy. We're providing you a comparison of the parking standards of both the city of Phoenix and Tempe, as I mentioned. We'll also be providing you some parking-related transportation management program overview. We'll also be providing you the parking situation, public parking situation from the downtown Tempe authority. And then finally, we'll be providing a summary of our findings and some recommendations that we have. So we are seeking your input and concurrence today. We'd like to reaffirm our commitment to the downtown parking standards, and we'd also like to identify areas recommended for improving our parking relations, or regulations, rather, outlined in this presentation. So an assessment of the parking requirements in Phoenix is where we'll start out. Thank you. But why are we talking about parking right now? We're not the only city across the United States that's also doing this. This map is from the Parking Reform Network, and all of those red dots represent the cities that are also looking at their parking requirements. So they're all doing this, such as Tempe, just to see if our parking requirements meet our current needs. And I'd like to just talk a little bit about Phoenix's parking reductions that probably most of you are familiar with at this time. The city council in early January of this year, they did approve a zoning ordinance text amendment. And what this did was reduce the parking requirements for multifamily, single-family attached, as well as affordable housing across the city. And they also included a definition for unreserved spaces, also known as guest parking spaces. But I did want to note that those parking reductions that I just talked about, those are not applicable to the downtown area in Phoenix. That area already has its own zoning regulations called the downtown code, but there's already reduced parking requirements available in their downtown area as part of that code, and there's additionally further options to reduce parking through their sustainability bonus program. A little bit more about Phoenix's parking reduction. So the, the text amendment primarily focused on reducing parking for multifamily development, but it also introduced a requirement for passenger loading zones for all multifamily developments. So this is for your Uber, your food delivery, your personal package deliveries. And the changes that were identified and supported in this, these parking reductions were all kind of based upon and supported by the Parking Generation Manual of the Institute of Transportation Engineers, specifically those manual requirements related to transit-oriented development, multifamily development, and affordable housing developments. Are we stuck? No, thank you very much. And Ashley, can you go back to the previous slide? I think, I think we might have missed one. Just not wanting to go back.
It's the operator.
Wow. Councilmember Garland, you can, Jeff can have words after this.
Okay, no, and I apologize. You could cover that, Jeff. I just wanted to make sure. I apologize for the pause there.
No, it's not important.
Okay, thank you so much. So now, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chairman, we'd like to discuss the comparison with the parking requirements in Tempe and Phoenix, and we'd like to introduce Lucas Jensen up to discuss that portion.
Thank you, Michelle, Mr. Mayor, Chair, Commission, and Council. I'm going to discuss some of the comparisons between Phoenix and Tempe's parking requirements. That's okay. So we wanted to provide an apples-to-apples comparison, so we're truly looking at what's comparable between our two cities. To do this, we looked at Phoenix's downtown code area to Tempe's city center zoning district. And then we looked at Phoenix's walkable urban code district to Tempe's transportation overlay district. The image is here, so you'll see Phoenix's downtown code area, and then side by side with Tempe's city center zoning district. Before we skip this slide, I do want to note that the business core and warehouse district, once we start talking about required parking, those two in Phoenix's downtown code area actually require zero parking for commercial developments. So this figure is showing the city center zoning district in Tempe compared to Phoenix's downtown code. These parking spaces are based on a hypothetical development. So for the multifamily development, it's a 200-unit development with a mix of bedrooms. The retail space is based on a 20,000-square-foot general retail development, and the hotel use is based on a 200-room hotel, just to provide that apples-to-apples comparison. You'll see in Tempe's city center zoning district for a multifamily development, that would require 198 spaces, which falls below the minimum parking requirement in Phoenix's downtown code area. The comparison between retail spaces, Tempe's city center is also falling between the, the minimum and maximum of Phoenix's downtown code area. And then the hotel use at 60 spaces is requiring less than Phoenix's downtown code area. The next comparison area we looked at was Phoenix's walkable urban code area to Tempe's transportation overlay district. That walkable urban code area in Phoenix is an opt-in district, so they opt into that, that walkable urban code. So looking here, there's various intensities that you can develop at in both of those areas, the transportation overlay district and the walkable urban code. Transx 5 and 6 in Phoenix are the most, the highest intensity, so we use that as a comparison. Using that same hypothetical development, you'll see that a affordable housing development in Phoenix would require 100 parking spaces, where that same development would require 359 in the transportation overlay district in Tempe. Going down, a generic multifamily with no affordable housing included would require 150 spaces in the city of Phoenix walkable urban code. 75 of those would be unreserved spaces for guests. I believe we'll talk about that a little bit more in the presentation. And then for a generic multifamily in Tempe, that would be 359 spaces, so a little bit higher for both of those. The retail comparison between the walkable urban and transportation overlay district is very similar between the two cities. So we were down at the hotel spaces, so Phoenix's walkable urban code would require 100 spaces for a 200-room hotel, and in the transportation overlay district, we would require 200 parking spaces. And then we also wanted to take a look at those citywide requirements because that's what Phoenix ultimately passed there last year, or just earlier this year. A generic multifamily development would require 300 spaces in standard zoning districts. 150, half of those would be unreserved. In Tempe, that would be a 440-space requirement. And then you'll see that retail and hotel spaces are identical for both cities when you're looking at citywide parking requirements. That's all I have for you. I will bring up Jacob Payne, our senior planner, to discuss a little bit more of the previously proposed methods for reductions.
Sounds good. And Jacob, before you get started, I'm going to go to Councilman Garland for a question.
I just have a quick question on that last slide. I just wasn't sure if I heard you right. So it showed Tempe has 400, for multifamily, 440 spaces, and then Phoenix has a 300. And I, I thought you said the 150 in Phoenix must be reserved, and then it sounded like the 440 have to be reserved in Tempe. Is that right, or just spaces?
The 440 spaces for a multifamily development citywide, that includes guest spaces. We have a comprehensive list of the parking ratios in the appendix to these. But we park them at .2 spaces per unit.
Okay.
For guests.
Okay, thank you.
That's good. Thank you. All right, Jacob, you're on.
Thank you, Lucas. Good evening, Mayor, council members, Chair, and members of the commission. So I'm going to go over some of the options that the city of Tempe currently utilizes for parking reductions, and then also have a look at one of our previously proposed plans that was looking at doing some parking reductions, specifically in our transit-oriented development overlay area. But our first option for parking reductions that we'll go over is our planned area development. So these are a zoning overlay that you can opt in as a developer when you propose a development, and this allows you to create your own standards for your project beyond what standard zoning might allow you to do. Part of that is you must provide evidence such a project is of higher quality than what the zoning would grant by right. And this process allows you to modify most standards, with the exception of density, but it includes parking that can be modified through this process. So it's worth noting that in the city of Tempe, all of our mixed-use zoning districts require you to go through a planned area development process, and this is also very common in our city center zoning as well. So when doing a planned area development, in order to reduce the parking minimums, the developer provides us with a parking study, where they offer an analysis on the projected parking demand for their project based on the location, using that manual from the transportation engineers that Michelle mentioned earlier. So that's the way that they go about doing that and providing their justification for the ratio that they want to propose to us as a reduction. These planned area developments don't necessarily need to adjust the parking ratios, you'll see in a minute. I have a slide that's going to go over some, some of the recent ones that we've seen and what those numbers look like. So this table, and there's a lot of information on it, but I want to draw our focus over to the last two columns. This is some of our recently approved and developed PADs across the city. So you'll see those first five are located in our city center district, and the remainder are all in the transportation overlay district, so generally along the Apache corridor. So those last two columns, those are breaking out what the parking ratio for those projects looks like based on a bedroom and based on the units in the project. So as you can see, in the per-bedroom range for our projects in city center, we're looking at, you know, somewhere between .2 parking spaces per bedroom and .8 parking spaces per bedroom. Just for reference, the city center requires .5 for a studio in one bedroom and .3 for the higher bedroom units. And then the latter part of that list, looking at projects in our transportation overlay district, types of parking reductions that we see requested in the range of, of like .3 spaces per bedroom, all the way up to some of those developments asking for 1.2 spaces per bedroom. So some of those projects are requesting reductions, and some of them are actually providing more parking than what the code would currently dictate that they need to provide. Just for some comparison, the city of Phoenix also allows for projects to deviate from parking standards. So this is a selection of some of the recent projects in city of Phoenix. These are all projects located in their transit-oriented communities, so they have opted into that walkable urban code district that they have. So you can see ranges of parking per bedroom, looking a lot higher than the types of reductions that we see here in the city of Tempe, generally a range of about .6 parking spaces per bedroom, up to about 1.4 parking spaces per bedroom. The second tool that I'll go over that we have currently allowable in the city of Tempe is what's known as a shared parking model. The idea here is, is a, would apply to sites that have a combination of multiple users that have different peak demand hours. So this would be when we have projects or subject sites where there's inherent differences in the parking activity patterns, and when considering those different patterns, the amount of parking is still adequate based on the different peak times that, that the users will be taking up those parking spaces on the site. This requires that there's a contract establishing the joint use of the parking spaces by all the users in the area. So this is just an example of what those look like. So you can see different users have different peak periods for their parking patterns. So one example that's, that's easy to imagine is that an office would tend to have parking that takes place during the day in about 8:00 to 5:00, whereas a residential building might have a parking pattern that's opposite of that. So looking back at one of the proposals for some parking reductions in the city, it's been brought up a lot today. This is part of the proposed urban code district back in 2019. So it was an opt-in zoning district that, as we talked about before, had some bonus programs built into it. And one of those things that was possible through this opt-in district was reductions in parking as an update to our transportation overlay district. So just for reference, to show what, what the parking requirements in that document had looked like at the time, here's a comparison of, of what parking reductions in the urban code district looked like compared to our current transportation overlay district, and then finally against what Phoenix's walkable urban code district parking requirements look like. So this is based on that same hypothetical development that Lucas was speaking about earlier. So in that standard multifamily project where Phoenix's walkable urban was requiring those 150 spaces, and our transportation overlay district was at 359, the minimum and maximum range in the highest intensity of the urban code district was between 170 and 213 spaces. So the reductions proposed as part of that plan, a couple of years back, was a lot closer to the types of reductions that Phoenix offers in their equivalent zoning overlay district. And then again, looking down at, you know, retail, you can see the range for the urban code district between 30 and 50, falls generally in line with what our, our current transportation overlay district allows, and then comparing that to the 25 spaces that would be required for that same retail space in Phoenix's walkable urban code. And then last, that last row down there about the hotel users, so the urban code district did have a more significant reduction for parking requirements for hotels, even compared to what Phoenix's walkable urban code is offering at the moment. But, so parking infrastructure is just a, a portion But so parking infrastructure is just a portion of this discussion. There's also tons of programming related transportation and transit. So at this moment, I'd like to invite up Chase Wallman, who's going to give a little bit of a discussion on that topic. Thank you.
Is that one working now? Oh, okay. I'm going to use this.
Whatever you're more comfortable, because I think that one's not going to work. If you're more comfortable with handheld, go with the handheld, so.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, Mr. Chair, members of the DRC. My name is Chase Wallman, principal planner with Tempe's Transportation and Sustainability Department. And as we're talking about the demand for parking, I just wanted to provide an overview of the significant investments in Tempe's transportation infrastructure, as well as ongoing planning efforts to address increasing accessibility for commuters, to take alternative modes of transportation to travel through the city. Next slide, please. Oh. Yes, thank you. So this slide is showing the investments in the transportation infrastructure. These are our transit improvements, as well as our investments in bike infrastructure. So for regional transit access through the city of Tempe, we have 13 arterial bus routes, two express bus routes, and then we also have six miles of light rail, which has nine stations within Tempe for regional transit connectivity. Additionally, we have more localized transit. We have the new Tempe Streetcar, as well as the Flash, and we have six neighborhood circulator routes called the Orbit, and these are free for commuters to use. Additionally, we have invested heavily in our bike infrastructure. We have 228 miles of dedicated bike facilities within the city, 186 miles of bike lanes, and 42 miles of off-street shared use path. And then finally, I just wanted to highlight our mobility hubs, Tempe mobility hubs. These mobility hubs are an accumulation of different modes of transportation, all within one geographic site. So these could vary in size and scales. It could be as small as just having a transit stop with maybe a bike locker and a scooter corral added, or it could be a larger-scale mobility hub. An example of this would be our Tempe Transportation Center. So this is where we have bike repair facilities and bike storage. You have access to regional transit and arterial buses, as well as neighborhood circulators and scooter corrals. So this mobility hub project, we're just starting the implementation phase right now, prioritizing areas and understanding appropriate scale for these mobility hubs throughout the city. But I just wanted to highlight this as an ongoing effort with our transportation program. Beyond this-
Quick thing, Vice Mayor has a question?
Just, it's just a comment. Looking at that slide, that is a very impressive slide, and I want to point out that Tempe has the best transportation in the valley for different options. So that really affects the need for parking, in my opinion. So I just, I'm glad you have this up, and I just want our community to realize, you have choices. You don't have to drive your car. And so that's my, I just want to point that out. Good job.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Adams, and that's something that we will continue to seek to improve upon as well and expand our, expand our network and our options. As far, going beyond the investment in infrastructure and transit service that we provide, I also wanted to highlight some ongoing long-range planning efforts that address both existing development, as well as new development within the city. So first, I'm going to talk about, I'm going to talk about our efforts to address existing developments and providing greater access to alternative modes of transportation. So this slide is talking about a transportation demand management strategy, that's TDM. This one specifically is the Transportation Management Association, or TMA. And a TMA is a collaborative agency that exists to provide transportation demand management programs, transportation services, traveler resources, planning and advocacy, and staff and technical capacity. Traditionally, such resources are only provided by employers with 50-plus employees. However, we are seeking to provide greater access to include employers of smaller scale, as well as multifamily residential, to connect them to these mobility services and options. In 2020, we completed the feasibility study, which included robust stakeholder outreach, and we have just kicked off Phase 2, or our implementation plan of the TMA. This implementation plan will outline its mission, vision, structure, membership, funding, and strategies for regional collaboration. The city of Tempe, along with our two other founding members, which is ASU and Downtown Tempe Authority, are seeking to create an independent agency where a range of public and private entities can come to meet, better meet their shared objective on the delivery of transportation programs and services to reduce traffic congestion and provide greater access to alternative modes of transportation. An example of these various transportation programs and services offered by TMAs across the nation are shown here on this slide. So this is kind of a menu of options of typical services that can be provided from a TMA, and these are services that we want to expand beyond just large employers to include smaller employers, as well as multifamily residential. Next slide, please. And then as we go beyond just the existing developments, I wanted to talk about how we are addressing TDM strategies for new developments that come in. So developments that generate 75 or more peak hour trips are required to submit a transportation impact study, which includes a trip reduction plan, or a TRP. A trip reduction plan identifies transportation demand management strategies, or policies that seek to reduce travel demand. An example of TDM strategies are shown here on this slide. Each TDM strategy is assigned trip reduction points, reflecting its relative effectiveness in reducing peak hour single occupancy vehicle trips. Depending on the amount of trips generated, a new development that is required to submit a TRP must either achieve 10, 15, or 25 points. This TRP requirement was first implemented in 2019, and staff are now currently evaluating this document to determine the current effectiveness of the listed TDM strategies, as well as recommend new strategies and an upcoming revision to the document. And with that, if there are no questions, I can pass it off.
Any questions for good, Anthony? All right, seeing none, thank you. Anthony, I'll go ahead and bring you up.
Anthony Street, Downtown Tempe Authority.
Thank you, Chase.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Chair, and Commission. I'm Anthony Street, I'm with Downtown Tempe Authority, Vice President of Operations, and I'm here to provide a little insight on the availability of monthly parking options for students, residents, and employees of the downtown. Specifically, we're looking at the off-street public parking landscape within the city center. The intended use of public parking is to support local business, employees, visitors, and events, and as such, is intended for short-term and daily parking. I want to make mention of several privately-owned public parking locations here in the city center to ensure a complete understanding of what truly is available for residents to utilize. Some privately-owned public parking locations, such as Hayden Ferry Lakeside, do not offer monthly overnight parking to non-affiliated patrons, such as their neighboring residents of Edgewater, Bridgewater, and Salt. These residents are often only provided one parking space per unit and are left to find monthly parking off-site should the unit's occupants collectively have more than one vehicle. Other parking facilities, such as 100 South Mill, 201 South Ash, and Mission Palms, do not offer permitted overnight parking on a monthly basis. Additionally, other ASU-owned facilities primarily cater to their students and staff and only, such as Fulton Center, University Towers, and Brickyard. In making mention of these facilities, as we cannot rely on them to accommodate for additional parking for residents that are unable to gain access to the limited parking where they live. Demand for residential parking east of Mill is increasingly growing as more residential towers are built. With recent developments of Tempe Union, Atmosphere, and Olive, all of which are located east of Mill, this has resulted in creating an imbalance of available residential parking between east and west of Mill Avenue. Look, it works. It works. We're right there. All right. In breaking down the residential monthly parking availability outside of ASU and other corporate parking facilities within the city center, we have five main parking facilities that offer long-term monthly parking to everyone. Four are located west of Mill, and one is located east of Mill. Out of the five facilities, we have a total of 1,622 public parking spaces, of which 1,202 are found west of Mill Avenue. Of the 1,202 total spaces west of Mill, approximately 730, or 60%, are vacant most days. With that said, though, when the downtown hosts concerts and other large events, this available parking west of Mill has, will drop to roughly 15% taken up by those who are participating in the events and the festivities.
Can I make, can I make a quick comment up there? I'm so glad you pointed that out, because I was actually talking to someone over lunch about this. I really fundamentally believe that it's not really a parking issue we have in the city of Tempe or in downtown when it comes to available spaces. It's about sort of the business mix and things of that nature. The downtown is evolving in terms of different kinds of establishments, hotels, Mirabella and ASU, a lot of market-rate multifamily, along with students. And so I think one of the challenges is the businesses, the business mix is changing when it comes to what are the kinds of food and beverage establishments you want in downtown? What are the kinds of retail establishments that will do well with the current demographics in the downtown? Because I've clearly seen when people will say, "Well, it's hard to park in downtown." But when you have an event like the Art Festival that happens twice a year, or the Tempe Blooms event that happened for the first time this year, all of a sudden, people find parking very easily and are willing to walk a couple of blocks to get to wherever they want to go to. So I think it really is about, sometimes it's about the programming, which I think is phenomenal, quite honestly, and the Downtown Tempe Authority does a great job with bringing really cool, original programming to the downtown. But I think a lot of what we're seeing downtown when it comes to the business and retail mix is something of an evolution. So I, so because when people will say, "Oh, I can't find parking," or "The parking is too challenging," I think it's just about the downtown evolving to meet the needs of the current population. But I definitely agree. I don't think there's a situation, and I'm probably jumping ahead, where we have to add a ton of new parking into the downtown, or use available space that we could be using for housing to create more parking structures, more surface-level parking. I think most of that, those spaces, need to be used to create housing for people who actually need it, and not to create additional parking. I think it's just a matter of the business mix evolving to meet the needs of the people that are here now and the people that are coming in the future.
That's correct. I guess I don't have anything else to say.
Sorry. I'm done.
All right. No, that was, that was perfect. That's pretty much a summation of what else I had. Stealing the thunder. Well, in conclusion-
I wasn't trying to shut you down, I promise.
He's very aware. In virtually, though, on the east of Mill Avenue, we have the City Hall Garage, which is roughly two to four blocks away from the concentrated residential demand. Where there at that facility, monthly parking is on a waitlist starting in July, all the way through May, and has an average vacancy of roughly 24% for just day-to-day parking. Even lower at the residential towers, such as Atmosphere, Tempe Union, and Olive, which most of the year are on a waitlist as well. So in conclusion, with the data that has been collected over time, and the continuous day-to-day observations of parking interactions downtown, it is evident that residential parking east of Mill Avenue is slightly underserved with the available part, public parking west of Mill Avenue being underutilized. Furthermore, the underserved residential parking poses challenges for the residents that spills into the public realm and left for the municipality to take on the enforcement and the financial burden. So with that, if there aren't any more questions.
Sounds good. Thank you, Anthony, Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. What are we doing to tell the public about that there is parking in downtown Tempe? Do we have like a campaign or anything like that going on so people know? Because I hear it too, I, there's nowhere to park. Well, there are places to park. But somehow, there's a disconnect between that there is, there is parking downtown, but that people don't know it. And I'm just wondering what we could do for our community and our constituents to let them know that they do have options for parking downtown.
That's a great question, Vice Mayor. So the DTA, we are starting a parking blog to start putting newsletters out there. We're going to start getting around to all the different key stakeholders, personnel that work down here, live down here, putting out the information and really helping them figure out where the best ways, or how, where the best parking locations are and how they can get there. We do that with all of our events. We put information out there for personnel who are coming down here, you know, where they can find parking, how they can get down here, the most efficient ways. We're also working with the TMA to provide that information and really change that perspective that there really is parking down here, and it may not be as convenient right in front of where you want to go, but we do have a walkable downtown, as the mayor said, and we want to exploit that.
We do. And what is the city of Tempe doing to spread the word? Are you guys, you're working together? Or how's that, because you said you had the blog.
Yeah, so we're working in conjunction with the TMA. So the city, ASU, DTA, through the TMA, we're starting to build that framework and creating those, that outreach.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Do you know, one more thing. Do you have a timeframe for when you'll be rolling that out?
It's something that we're trying to do this year, really get the framework down by the end of 2024 and really rolling that out. Big reasoning behind that, too, is because of the new streetscape that we're doing. So I know there's going to be some impact there with the different business owners and their employees, and there's going to be some concern about where people can park. So we really want to push that outreach as soon as possible.
Okay, and I think our communications team would be glad to help, too, any way they can. So Chris, is Chris here?
Yeah.
She's been walking around. I've seen her.
Okay, yeah, so shout out to Chris on that. Thank you.
Sounds good. All right, let me do-
Here she comes.
Oh, there she is. Hi, Chris.
Hey, Chris, I was just asking, just if we could work together, if you could help them roll all this information out, that would be, that would be great.
Absolutely. We do attempt to- Absolutely, we do attempt to put out parking, close parking locations when we put out information about events like Mill Avenue Art Fest. So it's a pretty regular thing for us to say, "Close parking, close light rail, close street car exits." We'll continue.
Okay, good. And just because this team is working on it, and I think that you guys could, you could help, you know, everybody collaborate together.
We have a great partnership. We continue to do that.
Okay, then I don't have anything to worry about. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let me go next to Councilmember Hodge, and then Councilmember Garland.
Okay, my question, I guess, I think Vice Mayor kind of took it, but my was like, when we have events, can we like give a map, like a map out saying this is where parking could be at and where they can be? Because that helps out when you have, when people have a map. Because you can say, "Close parking," but they still don't understand where the close parking is at. But if you kind of give a map, like showing downtown area and where actually is the parking, that can help in that, in that scenario, too.
Okay, yeah.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Councilmember Garland?
Thank you. It seems like we all have the same question or idea or thoughts about how to make sure people know about the parking. I know that in some cities, they have an app, a parking app, that you can get on and look and go, "Oh, there's five parking spots over here, and there's 25 over there." And I know that that's not free. I'd really love to see something like that, because I really think that would help if you know that you're going to go downtown, to know that if there's going to be a parking spot there for you. It wouldn't be for just for city of Tempe, it'd be for anybody else who wanted to come and enjoy the amazing things that we have in downtown Tempe. But I just, just a thought, I don't know what the name of the apps are called, but I have been told about them. I just would love to see something like that, because I think it would make it really easy for people to come down. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Chairman Johnson?
So you pointed out, the issue that I really take home from this, from what you presented here, was the discrepancy between the east and west side of downtown. And there's an abundance of residential units on the east side, and kind of a, more of a lack of available parking spaces for the public and for lease for those residents. So I think that educational component for those residents is another piece to hit on as well, not just for visitors to downtown, but for those people that live downtown to understand that there are places, maybe a way, an easy way for them to understand where those spaces are, where they can use, instead of parking on the street and taking up spaces that maybe the visitors can use.
Yeah, so when, we manage all the monthly parking for downtown for most areas outside of the residential towers, most of them. Their residents will reach out to us and say, "Hey, I want City Hall Garage, because it's two blocks away. It's a convenience." But when we tell them, "Hey, well, four blocks away, you know, there's no waitlist, and it's $10 cheaper. Would you like me to add you there?" They don't.
Interesting.
That's the consensus.
We need to exercise more.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for putting this together. I think it's important that we take a comprehensive approach to this. I think, as the mayor said- I think, as the mayor said, parking usage is evolving, so we need to evolve to as a city. So thank you for your efforts. This is separate, but related, and it might be for staff, but what was the outcome of the curb-side study that was recently done down on Mill Avenue?
So we began to do the curb, curving management study towards the end of last year, once we recognized that the street, streetscape was going to happen, because the main study was along Mill Avenue. It was brought to everybody's attention that, hey, there's going to be major impact along this curb, that it's going to skew the numbers. So if you have swaths of the Mill Avenue block or two closed at a time, you know, traffic is going to interact differently, they're going to, may not park on, you know, Fifth and Mill, which, without construction, might be a high-demand area, but we wouldn't really see that in the numbers with the cameras. So without wasting too much time, resources, money, and everything, we put the curving management on pause until the construction is done, so that we get real numbers, real utilization, real demand, and have a really good understanding of what our curb looks like before we start making, you know, these bigger decisions on, you know, rates or pricing models.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Miller?
First of all, thank you very much. This is really good information, and we've been looking for it for a while, so now that it's here, it's really great. Thank you. It strikes me, and I'm sort of piggybacking off the mayor, there are like two issues here. One is the episodic need for parking during events, which is, in some ways, it's a parking issue, but it's also more a people movement issue. There are a lot of different alternative transportation modes within the city. And maybe part of the way to move more people into the downtown area when it's, when these events are happening, is to encourage and get people used to the idea that there's more than one way to get around, and it doesn't mean getting in a car, just by yourself, or maybe even with a few friends. Second, though, is the fact that there's a growing residential base in the downtown area. And there seems to be an expectation that, along with having a residential base, you've got a place to park that's either right there or somewhere else. And I think maybe that's, there's a bit of a disconnect, in my mind, between the idea of wanting an urban environment and living in an urban environment, and expecting to have a car at your beck and call whenever you want it. And looking at the prices that you provided for us, they're ridiculously inexpensive, parking.
Thank you.
I mean, that's just ludicrous. You look in a lot of cities, and you will pay mortgage rates to find a place to park, and you may walk blocks to do that. And yet, people do that, because they want to live in an urban environment. I think possibly there's, fixing this disconnect, too, might be kind of useful, and that's more a long-term process and involves the people who are, you know, providing the new housing, that they need to educate the people who are coming in there, that you can't necessarily expect the same sorts of things you did, you had in a garden apartment down on Warner Road. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I completely agree with what you're saying, too. I mean, I think it's part of why a lot of folks have been very invested in sort of building up the downtown, because you have to, in a sense, sometimes, get people to live in a downtown who really are comfortable with that environment, or who really buy into what that's all about. And that means not having the same kinds of parking ratios that you would have in a suburban portion of town that you would have in a downtown urban core. But I also do think it is partially about sort of education and saying, "Look, in larger cities," of which, you know, the city of Phoenix is now the fifth-largest city in the country from a population standpoint, we, we're going to have to get more used to an urban lifestyle, where it's not just simply, you know, you can drive up and have these sort of suburban parking models and see this oasis of parking in front of you. I think it is about getting some of our folks used to the fact that, you know, you might have to park and walk a block or two, and that's not strange. And I agree, the parking rates compared to a lot of other major US cities are, I mean, are dirt-cheap compared to what you see across the country. So no, I couldn't agree more. Commissioner Lloyd? Something else? Nope? Okay. Anyone else? All right. Sounds good. All right, thank you so much.
Turn it back over to Michelle.
Over back? Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we just have a few more slides to wrap up our presentation. Would like to go over our comparisons with us in the city of Phoenix. So basically, we came up with the following, that the parking ratios in our city center, they're comparable already to Phoenix's downtown code. Also, our transportation overlay district does not offer as significant a reduction in parking as you see in Phoenix's walkable urban code, but if you look at the previously proposed parking reform from the urban code district, those came much closer to the reductions in Phoenix's walkable urban code. And citywide, Phoenix's new reformed parking standards is far below the requirements in Tempe, in our standard zoning districts. And just a few quick words on ratios, bedrooms versus units. So when you have parking ratios based on bedrooms versus units, you just get different results. So in our downtown region, for example, units with more bedrooms are more common, and parking ratios based on units, that might result in too little parking. But on the other hand, when you have parking based on units, you might have too much parking. So it really depends on the type of unit that we're talking about. And then just a quick comment on guest and unreserved parking. So parking that, you know, we see for residential often exists in gated lots or in parking garages. And how Phoenix attempted to alleviate the lack of unavailable parking is that 50% requirement that Jacob talked about, where 50% of the required parking in multifamily projects has to be unreserved parking. And in contrast, in Tempe, we just require 0.2 guest parking spaces per unit. And finally, we have our conclusion and recommendations. So based on the studies that we've conducted, we conclude that our city center parking ratio, as I mentioned a minute ago, it does remain appropriate and currently comparable to Phoenix's downtown code. And we have four recommendations for your consideration. The first one is revisiting the parking minimums in our transportation overlay district. The second one is retaining the parking ratio that we currently have based on the number of bedrooms rather than the number of units. We also recommend exploring options in retaining unreserved residential spaces that might be used for shared parking in a downtown district, so what you were just talking about earlier, Mr. Mayor. And then finally, employing additional reductions in parking standards for projects that include affordable housing. So that concludes our presentation. We have a lot of people here on our panel that are happy to answer any additional questions that you have. We look forward to any further comments.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anyone, commission, council, Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes. Excellent presentation, very thorough, and I like how you compared us with Phoenix, and it makes us look like, well, we are better than Phoenix, so that's good. I always like that. This is also a sustainability issue. We don't want people in their cars. Downtown, you don't need, you don't need a car. If I lived downtown, I would not have a car. In fact, I didn't like to drive. So I just, you know, sell my car and use public transportation. So I just want us to, you know, really focus on continuing to get our folks out of their cars. I'd also ask that we continue, well, like I said, to build less parking in developments, and that gives us the opportunity to build more housing, as opposed to garages, which is what we need. We need more housing. We don't need more cars. So I just want to have you guys keep that in mind as we go through the developments, and, you know, sustainability, best practices say, we should be having less parking, and that's, that's what I'd like us to push. There's places in LA that they don't have any parking for the residents in downtown LA that, at all. It's, you're, you won't be able to, you won't have the opportunity to park anywhere there. And I think that's the movement that we're going forward, and that will happen here also, I believe, down the road. But that's just, you know, I want to, I just want to make us aware that that is a possibility, and it is a sustainability issue, which is near and dear to my heart. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments, Mayor Woods, Vice Mary Adams, and I, and I think staff is right along the same page with you. At this point, we understand exactly what your take is. We understand that that is the future of the city of Tempe. You know, I will say that one of our concerns is that we don't want to move too fast. We know that the city of Tempe is not Chicago, is not, you know, some of these larger cities who can accommodate and provide all the amenities that Tempe cannot at this point. That's what we're doing right now. You know, as planners, we are building a city that is, you know, we're, we're building an urban core, a place where people can, you know, live, work, and play within the city and not need a car. So what we don't want to do is, we don't want to jump too fast. We want to make sure that parking is available for those people who need it. You heard Anthony say that, you know, there's people that live on the east side of Mill Avenue, that live in the current towers, that are currently looking for parking. They are, they are searching for parking right now, and they're on waitlists for other parking areas. We still feel very strongly that, you know, these developers, when they come in, they need to accommodate parking for the tenants that they have in those buildings, whether, whether it's residential use or commercial use, whatever it may be. We feel very strongly about that. We feel like our numbers, our parking requirements that we have on the books right now are adequate. They are, they are reduced to a level that we think will allow us to reduce them in the future, but that provides us what we need right now. You know, we don't want our commercial businesses to suffer because all the parking spaces are taken by residential.
I get that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, I just want to keep that on the horizon.
Absolutely. You're right, you're right on track, and that's exactly where we're going. You know, like I said, as planners, we look at this thing, we look at this, and we, you know, we just don't want to jump too fast, because, you know, just because we're reducing the amount of parking spaces in the downtown, doesn't mean that we're reducing the amount of congestion and cars on the street.
That's why we're going to have to get the cars off the streets.
Yeah. We'll just eliminate cars completely.
I won't give up on that.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate your perspective, Jeff, and I think you're being very calculated by how you're, you're going about this, which I am prudent, so I appreciate it, and you have my support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garland?
As far as your recommendations go on your staff conclusion, I support all of them. So mine was quick. But I also want to say that maybe we should start with our council member parking, and we've got seven, maybe we should reduce it to four, maybe, and we could figure out who's going to walk, or bike, or take the bus. I mean, I, I am all about leading by example, so, you know, I guess we should start.
I live downtown, so I guess maybe that's me, so...
Corey can be our one. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
I just want to say that I'm okay with all, all four of the recommendations, so thank you.
That's it.
Good. Anyone else, council, commission? All right. Wonderful. I support them as well. Thank you so much. Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item number four, future meeting dates and future meeting topics. Are there any future meeting dates that anyone from the commission or the council would like to recommend, any future agenda items? All right. Yes, Commissioner Miller?
I would like to recommend or ask that we have a discussion, maybe at our next meeting, about the possibility or the ability to get input, especially for our deliberations at DRC, from entities such as the Parks Board, the Neighborhood Advisory Commission, especially on issues like open space requirements, areas that we want, might want to use, develop in different ways, and that could also tie back into the whole idea of parking. If we have maybe a little less parking, we get more open space, or we got some additional parks, and they're a resource. They are, you know, they're, they're another resource, and maybe if we'd at least ask them, or shoot them, say, "Hey, this project, you might be interested in making a comment about it." So, you know, I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Jeff, Madam City Manager, sound good? Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else? Any other future agenda items anyone has on their mind? All right. Sounds good. There will be other things, I'm sure, that will pop up then, because that takes me to item number five, which is adjournment. The next scheduled Tempe City Council and Tempe Development Review Commission joint meetings are scheduled for October 29th, 2024. So of course, if you have something in between then, please feel free to let us know. And then after that, May 19th of 2025. With no other business this afternoon, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good night.
Jeff, please. It just doesn't, it doesn't, it sounds...